A critic, but a good friend, Dan Montague, who passed, who recently passed away, who loved the city. So if you could join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which is theirs. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're gonna miss Dan. You can bet he's telling somebody what to do wherever he is right now.
Think about it is.
Think about it is.
Think about it is. God love him. He is. The clerk will call the roll, please.
He doesn't know what he's getting doing.
He wants to know what it's here. Called him home too soon. That's.
Protogiru.
Here.
You're here.
Mr. Riddick.
Here.
Mr. Smigel.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Here.
Mr. Frame.
Here. The motion is to excuse Dr. Whibley, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. We're glad to have all of you here. Tonight's agenda includes a couple of public hearings, which we will take up first. We then have one consent matter, and then we'll move directly to the regular agenda items. We'll vote on all of these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. Inclusion of the regular agenda. Member of the public would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda item. You'll be given that opportunity, and a couple of you have elected to do that. So there are no ceremonial matters. So we should have a fairly brief meeting. So we'll move directly to public hearing number one, please.
Mr. President, may we certify the closed session?
Did we, we didn't do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do that.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk, held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman. I signed up to speak on PH1.
Oh, we're not at PH1.
You're closing the closed meeting.
This, this is.
Oh, you're.
It's a. Yes, sir. No, no. Doug, we're not quite there yet. It's my fault, Mr. James, but go ahead.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Are we there? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, public hearing one.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on an ordinance to amend and reordain the title of Section 14.1-56 subsection 14.1-7524 and Section 14.1-122, so as to change the name of the precinct from Hunt and Y precinct to Tidewater Gardens precinct and change its voting place to Ruffner Academy.
Okay. Rodney Jordan.
Can I ask a quick question, too? I might, may have missed this. Why are we changing the name to Tidewater Gardens and not naming it after the actual physical location of the building? Normally, don't we usually name it after whatever the building is?
We like Hunt and Y.
Okay, you couldn't, would you tell us your name, please?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Isles, Deputy Register. We had voted, or we had recommended changing it to Tidewater Gardens in the event the polling precinct ever had to move, if there was a change. We know the schools have been undergoing changes with moving, and if that had a change again, then we'd have to go through a whole other approval process. So we try and do it after the community, if at all possible.
I was just, I'm just worried about confusion with, if you named it Ruffner, then people know.
That it's Ruffner.
That it's Ruffner, and you vote at Ruffner.
If you all want it to be Ruffner.
Okay. We're gonna, motion is to amend PH1.
Oh, are you okay with that?
To read Button Wide precinct.
That would be Ruffner precinct.
To. Ruffner Academy precinct?
I think that's the official name, yeah.
Right. And change its voting place to Ruffner Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You've changed the doc, you want to document? Okay. So, Mr. Jordan.
Good afternoon. Rodney Jordan, 2506 Myrtle Avenue. Just came in, like to recommend that the council consider St. Mary's. I understand about the concerns in terms of some of the challenges that may need to be worked out with the diocese. But if any of us had the opportunity to stand out at, on Tidewater Drive, just trying to get across to Ruffner, I mean, the children have the advantage of a crossing guard, and I know they'll try to make some provisions for that. But I'd just like to encourage that we look at having the precinct within the boundaries of the community. Choose St. Mary's, which I think is much more accessible. And even if you look at today and yesterday with some of the flooding, it seems that you have less of an issue with that at St. Mary's than you do at Ruffner. So I'll just ask that, that you consider the convenience of St. Mary's versus Ruffner. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Cook.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Ms. Michelle Cook. I live at 589 Ruffner. I am against it going to Ruffner Academy because of the eight lanes of traffic, the, those that have disabilities. I recommend that, if all possible, to go to St. Mary's. And if it can be amended, that it be done and taken to St. Mary's. I truly would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Ellis James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Council, Mr. Jones. My name is LSW James. I reside at 2021 here in the wonderful city of Norfolk, Virginia. I'm not opposed to this precinct change, however, I do have some concerns that are beginning to really get after me a little bit. These changes, this change won't impact the community until, I believe, next November, not this November. And so it gives us time to do something that I think we should pay close attention to. And I believe, Mr. Riddick, you were the one who touched on this previously during the informal session one week. Tidewater Drive is a disaster zone at times, and it, I've thought a lot about this, and I drive that particular way. You have two significant things. In the morning, people coming downtown to go to work, where the traffic is, even if you're turning onto City Hall and past the school administration building, it is often backed up and dangerous. So that means that voters going to the polls early, especially if they're younger people like me and trying to navigate Tidewater Drive, getting across to the academy, may have some real problems. Also, in the afternoon, after you get to about 3:30 or 4 o'clock, it is very difficult to drive safely down Tidewater Drive and to then swing up and come around on St. Paul's to get to City Hall. I would think that until the residents of Tidewater Gardens have a couple of voting opportunities and elections, that we are going to need not just signs, although putting the school slowdown zone lights on would probably be one of the things that we could do. But we also are gonna need some police officers to protect our residents and our voters. I would hate to see us throw cold turkey, our folks from Tidewater Gardens, into that situation, not knowing, and especially if you have mothers with small children, or grandparents trying to come to vote, who are bringing their grandchildren with them and so on. I just think there are a few more things that we can do. And it's not, I'm not trying to fault our registrar's office. They've done, they've done a lot of work on trying to figure this one out. And that's why I'm not opposed to the change. But I really think we've got plenty of time to think this thing through and to make for just a few go rounds and elections. We've got enough time to figure out how we can protect our citizens and make sure that it is a good democratic experience and not, that's a little D.
Right. Thank you. Well, thank you, Ellis, and thank you for that advice. To the folks who are here this evening, this is, the council actually had the presentation about the change of the precinct, and really not satisfied when we heard about it, and we asked the registrar's office to go back and check again. We actually recommended St. Mary's for a couple of reasons. When they came back to us the second time, they did not feel that St. Mary's would work. They looked at a couple of other facilities, and they, and we came back around to their original recommendation. And that's, you know, that's what we're here with. It's, it's, we've, I think folks have worked very hard to this point, trying to come up with, you know, maybe not a great answer, but the best answer that we could, that we could, could, you know, could actually work with. So, okay, that's all the folks who are here to speak. If there's nothing else, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain the title of Section 14.1-56 subsection 14.1-7524 and Section 14.1-122, so as to change the name of the precinct from Hunt and Y precinct to Ruffner Academy precinct and change its voting place to Ruffner Academy. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson.
Before I vote, there are, there's a couple of things that I would like to say. Number one, for me, this was a difficult decision. Number one, to keep in mind the safety of the residents first. St. Mary's was one of our first choices. And to come down Tidewater Drive, it is a busy time. It's extremely dark down there by that area. So safety is a real concern for me. Number two is that I did not hear from the residents concerning your choice as far as where you would like to see the precinct with the choices given before you. And safety is, again, a great concern. So it was really difficult. It is difficult for me. And the last decision is that I see that we're going to put up signs on November 4th, our next election, for the residents, letting them know where the voting precinct will take place. I think that we need to share some more discussion with the community to get their thought process as far as what we're gonna do about the voting place. Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Thank you. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Oceanview Little League for the use of certain property known as Ocean Air Field. I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Oceanview Little League for the use of certain property known as Ocean Air Field. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Just want to thank the city staff for getting this done quickly. I know it was a concern. I did have one question, maybe Darrell, you can answer. If for some reason the school construction gets delayed, would they be able to do a temporary lease on this, for the spring season on Oceanview Fields if we find that it's not, they're not breaking ground over there? Hopefully, they are, but.
Yes, sir, Councilman Smigel, that won't be an issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Approve C1. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr., Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile and truck repair facility known as Angelo's Tire and Repair on property located at 1139 East Princess Anne Road, and the Planning Commission recommends approval by 5-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. R2.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as El Deportista on property located at 1819 East Little Creek Road, and Planning Commission recommends approval on a 5-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. R3, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment known as 5018 on property located at 5018 East Princess Anne Road, and by 4-01 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Right, just a second. Damian Wright, please. If you'll give us your full name and present home address, please.
Name, name is Domain Wright, 5573 Brickell Road, Norfolk, Virginia, 23502.
Okay. We'd love to hear from you. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. First thing, afternoon again, thanks for hearing me out. First thing, I'd like to say that we are a restaurant, not a club or a bar. We want to serve drinks with our food, but we're trying to do comedy, poetry, live jazz music. Walked around the community, talked to them. They seem to be all for it. Safety is gonna be a number one priority when we're, when we're operating, so I'll make sure I have that in place. I followed all the rules set forth by the Planning Commission, done everything, and I will abide by all rules and regulations set forth by the city.
Did you meet with the civic league?
Apparently, there is no civic league. I tried to reach out to them, but nobody came back.
They have a couple civic leagues in that vicinity.
Yeah. They do. I, I saw the, the information that was on the Planning Commission sheet, and I don't know where that name came from. I'm gonna recommend that the Planning Commission get with probably our clerk and get an updated list of civic leagues' presidents and telephone numbers for starters, but, okay.
Would you recommend delaying this until?
I wouldn't talk about it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna delay it.
Okay. We have one more speaker.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Gabriel Rappasardi. It's the owner.
Good evening. My name's Gabriel Rappasardi. I'm the landlord for 5018 Princess Anne Road, 304 Twilley Street, 23503. I would just like to say that I would commend Mr. Wright. I mean, he's done a fantastic job with the property. We've done a complete renovation to the entire property, and our goal is to make the property, you know, a nice place to go. They would like to serve drinks with dinner. Their main focus is food and to be a nice establishment for people to, to go to. Was your concern with the time, Mr. Riddick?
I'm gonna express my concerns in a sec, once you finish.
Okay, sir. And I can assure you that we will keep it safe and, and do everything we have to do to abide by the city's laws and rules and with the ABC.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Wright.
This, this facility for years was a restaurant called Laura and Urbans, and there's a couple of things that, well, the main thing that, well, there are several things that bother me. Number one, Mr. Homewood, we haven't had an ABC license as early as 10 o'clock since Nordstrom started selling breakfast earlier. All of our ABC licenses begin at 11:00, if we're gonna use them on Sunday at all. That's the first thing. The next thing is, this, this facility is where I'm thinking, it's right across the street from the old Norfolk Methodist Church that moved from Lambert's Point to Halsted Avenue. And I'm thinking about how close the, closest house is to that. Also, this is, you know, you have communities that you try to keep stable, and right now, this Fox Hall community, that whole area is, is a stable community. And, and what I'm worried about now is when you start selling alcohol, the next thing you can know, you're gonna have people up there, you're gonna have gunshots, and then we're gonna have another community that's gonna be inundated with gunshots. What happens with these individuals who open these restaurants? When they see that they can't make money off food, they'll get a quart of liquor and say, "How many drinks I can sell out of that quart of liquor?" Now, it's, this is different from Colley Avenue. This is different from Grammy Street. This is in a stable community that I believe that we need to keep stable. It's right around the corner from one of Norfolk's oldest churches, and to allow them to sell alcohol, when nobody has ever sold alcohol in that particular place, it just, it just bothers me. And on the initial application, it had no opposition, and today, we have at least 11 residents of that particular community who is, who are opposed to that. And so I just, you know, and, and I don't know whether there are any more in addition to this 11, but I just really believe that this place doesn't need alcohol, and this community doesn't need to be threatened with becoming one of our communities where every Friday night, Saturday night, you got a lot of gunshots.
If, just wanted to comment on one thing. We have recently been receiving applications for 10:00 AM and, and earlier. In fact, there's three more, there's three more applications.
Flag them, so we can send each one of them back. We're not gonna change that.
And these are Sundays.
Yeah, these, we talking about Sunday now. We're not talking about, Sunday is too early to start drinking liquor at 10:00 in the morning.
There are three other applications.
Flag them for me.
On, on this agenda that have earlier, earlier than 11:00 hours.
On Sundays?
Yes, sir.
That's for mimosas and Bloody Marys, I assume?
Anything you want. And I think it's too early on Sunday. I think we being disrespectful to the religious community when it comes to that.
I, I'd like to have a continuance. I would like to give the applicant the opportunity to meet with the civic league. Some of the civic leagues are not in session during the summer, and we do have a letter signed with opposition from several members of the community. And so I think in all fairness, it would be fair to the applicant to allow them to at least meet with the civic league. I personally, I love Jesus, and I don't have a problem with alcohol at 10:00 AM, and I like having a glass of wine with my meals. But I think that if we are gonna add alcohol, then you, we do need to at least work with the community and give them an opportunity as a collective body to weigh in on what this established, how, how good of a neighbor you've been so far, and, you know, to say whether or not they feel comfortable collectively going forward in allowing you to have alcohol. And, you know, I disagree with Mr. Riddick. I don't think that alcohol brings gunshots. I think people bring gunshots. But I'd like to have a continuance on it, please.
And I'm more interested in Mr. Wright, you meeting with the different civic leagues there, so that they can share their thoughts and maybe some future plans that are already in the community, and you will have an opportunity just to meet those great people out there. And Fox, Fox Hall does, as evidently, there are several. So I want to say, give you an opportunity to meet.
Do that. Mm-hmm. I think that's only fair.
Well, we don't meet again till October 16th, 14th. Okay.
Let's roll on the continuance first.
All right. That's what we would do.
Okay.
All right, then, the motion is to continue till October the 14th.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
No.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. All right, let's.
R4.
Mm-hmm.
I have two ordinances on this, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance granting a special, both are recommended 5-0 by, for approval by the Planning Commission. The first is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment named as Five Points Community Farm Market on property located at 2500 Church Street, Suite A, and 2501 Fawn Street.
All right. I'm glad to acknowledge the presence here in the council chambers tonight of a former member of the City Council, who is also the Vice Mayor of the City of Norfolk, and has now representing us, I believe, in the, in the Virginia General Assembly. There are four folks who have signed up to speak in favor of this. I'm not aware of any opposition, but we would love to hear from Dawn Hester for that. Just keep moving, Dawn, or you want to come up? Okay. I'm not aware of any. If any, and now, you know, thank you, Dawn. Bev, would you like to say something?
If I could speak.
Sure, you want to come up then?
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Sort of, kind of. Good evening, Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Williams, City Manager, and other council members. I'm Bev Sell. I live at 3424 Chesapeake Boulevard. I am the founder and the general manager of the Five Points Community Farm Market, which is a 501(c)(3) community nonprofit. In January of 2008, when we moved to 2500 Church Street, it was a vacant warehouse. Some of you, I know, Mr. Wynn, you were there when we cut the ribbon. We, we did a lot of work on that place, the electricity, the plumbing, the bathrooms, the windows, the doors, all needed to be redone. We believed in the community and the place in which we located. We wanted to have our healthy products that we could supply to our neighbors and the communities of Norfolk. I believed in the location and the possibility so much that I personally used my home as collateral to secure a loan. In the past six years, we have worked hard to create a community venue, providing healthy foods, a small business incubator, and a cafe. Our small business incubators are all minorities, and they have proven to be successful. Dwayne Thompson, I'm gonna brag a little bit. Dwayne Thompson of Sabroski Foods recently received a USDA grant for over $300,000. Leslie Cruz of Kabuchik Tea won the Score Young Entrepreneur of the Year 2013. It was the only nationwide award that was given. And Holy Rollers, some of you know those yeast rolls. She started two years ago with a table. She's grown into full production. Her next step is gonna be a storefront. We're excited about that. Our market is used for community events such as poetry readings, health workshops, documentary movies, knitting groups, and organizations such as the Legal Women Voters, who have their monthly breakfast meeting there. We are a great, good place. So when our customers ask us to apply for an on-off ABC license, we felt it was a natural fit. Other farm markets in Virginia Beach and Williamsburg have alcohol for sale and sampling, so we didn't think it was an unusual request. When we filed for our ABC application, I was mindful of the Norfolk ABC Task Force we held in 2000. The citizens from across the city participated, including myself. The end result being with the citizens could ask for three things from ABC applicants. the citizens could ask for three things from ABC applicants. They are the size of the product, the condition of the product, either warm or chilled, and the hours in which they're sold. The fact is, since 2008, we have had 35 special event ABC banquet licenses covering 72 serving days with no problems, no calls for service, no out-of-control drunken behavior, and no complaints from our neighbors. If permitted to sell Virginia beer and wine, craft beers and wine, we will sell no 20 or 40-ounce beers. We will sell no off-ABC cold, only warm, to be taken home for home consumption. And the market closes to off-ABC at 7:00 PM. I'm gonna cut to the chase scene here and say that we ask for your support in our application for an on-off ABC license. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What time on the weekend would you start?
On Saturdays, I believe it's 10:00, and Sundays, I believe it's 10:00. And that was a recommendation from the Planning Department that we do that, because that's the hours in which we're open 9:00, we're open 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. And Sunday, we're open from 10:00 to 3:00.
In the past, we had been, on Sundays, it would, all of our, into reason, I don't know, maybe it was a change in the direction of the Planning Department, who's head in the Planning Department. But it was always a consensus that we would begin on Sunday alcohol at 11:00.
I don't have any problem with that.
Are you amenable to that?
I'm amenable to that.
Thank you.
Was that changed to on Sunday instead of 9:00 AM, 11:00 AM?
Right.
Thank you. From 10:00 AM to 11:00, Sunday. Sunday is 10:00 AM to? No, no, no.
It's 11:00.
She opens at 10:00, and she can start serving alcohol at 11:00 on Sunday.
Can we get an explanation from George on why it was changed to 10:00? Because some of us aren't opposed to 10:00 AM. But if you can explain why, because I know, I've had some restaurants that are now asking to go earlier now that I think it's changed, or there's been some loosening of it. I don't know.
If there's brunch, if there's brunch and they start at 10:00, I mean, I don't see the difference in an hour. But, George?
When Miss Sell first came, her proposal for hours was really difficult to understand. And we suggested she simplify and just ask for whatever hours she thought she would actually, she would possibly ever need. Because one of the issues is that as part of her business, she does catering. And so some of the times that she's actually open, she's in there and providing catering services. And so our suggestion was to simplify, ask for whatever hours you think you might ever need, and go from there. And that was, that was the reason. And just as a point of clarification, the hours on Saturday and Sunday are 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
That alcohol, wait, that she's open?
Those are the hours that she's open, as well as the hours for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise and off-premise consumption. That's what the application before you, I believe you're changing Sunday to 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Until 3:00. I think she closed at 3:00.
Yeah, but she does catering. So if she's got an event on Sunday evening, she needs to have it until 10:00, so she doesn't have to come back and do another...
I'm just talking about the starting time.
Can we go back to the starting time? So what changed? Because of Mr. Riddick, he's said that in the past that it's always been 11:00. Then why now are there applications starting at 10:00? What changed with the Planning Commission that's allowing this? Or if this was before my time on council, I just wanted to know the history behind that.
Well, Mr. Smigel, really what changed is that council approved opening hours earlier than 11:00 AM.
Okay.
And once you started doing that, we felt that that 11:00 AM policy time was no longer in effect. And so we've told applicants that they can ask for whatever they want to ask for. And the council will give them an answer based on what council feels is appropriate.
So you're basing it on whatever time the establishment opens, that's when they get, they're allowed to sell alcohol, is what you're saying?
We base it on the individual who is making the request and what they are asking for and how their business model works. Some people, their business model is to have a brunch with mimosas and Bloody Marys. And other people, their business model is they don't actually start serving alcohol until mid to late afternoon. So we've encouraged people to ask for what they think they need, because we're trying to become, be as business-friendly as we possibly can and help them achieve their goals.
Do we know what other cities do, like Virginia Beach or Portsmouth or Chesapeake, when it comes to Sunday hours of serving alcohol? Because I just never really thought that there was a big deal about the 11:00. I'd never heard it, per se. So do we know what other cities do?
Ms. Williams, there's only two, there are only two localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia, us and the City of Richmond, that are allowed to regulate through the special exception process the hours of operation of an ABC establishment such as, of a restaurant serving alcohol.
So who regulates the rest of them? The ABC directly?
And then they're the default ABC hours, which are 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight.
Oh, okay.
For off-premise and 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM for on-premise.
Okay. All right.
Okay. How many other establishments in the city do we have that open up before 11:00 on Sundays now with selling alcohol?
I would have to, I would have to get back to...
I think the first one, we actually, it goes back to the Marriott, I think, almost, with a hotel being allowed to, and it was never a written policy. It was more an informal policy that on Sundays, that alcohol was sold at 11:00. And that probably has evolved over time. So, but it's not anything that the council's necessarily bound by. I mean, but it was, it has been an informal rule of ours.
And I can tell you, I have encouraged people to come in and ask for 10:00, frankly.
I mean, I don't see the difference in one hour. If it's, you know, if people are open for business and they're selling breakfast, and you wait for an hour before you can have a mimosa or whatever, I just, I don't know. I think it's kind of hideous to me to have a restaurant have to wait an hour before they can serve alcohol when they're open for business. It just doesn't...
Can we just leave the application as 10:00 and vote on it?
Yeah.
See?
Yeah.
Bev, I think she's trying to be accommodated. Bev, what, do you wanna come on up? I mean, that's...
I don't have a problem with 10:00, 10:00 or 11:00. I agree with you that if you're open at 10:00, I can see me trying to explain to some customers that, you know, a mimosa, we can't serve you a mimosa till 11:00. But I honor Mr. Riddick also in his request. So that's why you guys are...
Let's put on 10:00.
Leave it at that.
All the way around, Bev.
We can pass it later.
He's a, he's a nice guy, but don't give up the hour if you don't want to.
I mean...
Not that nice.
It would be nice to be consistent. I will say that.
I think we need to do it by everybody.
Nice going.
Yeah.
Let's put on 10:00.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, we're gonna vote on 10:00. Okay. All right, back to, we're back to the original ordinance.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, I appreciate the fact that they are selling warm off-premises. That's one thing. You know, this came about, you know, several years ago, and a lot of churches in the area were against it. And even now, obviously, the ground swell that we had in 2008, we don't have now. But I appreciate with the fact that the application that they, in the application with no push from anybody that I know of, decided to sell warm off-premises. And so that's what, that made me less of an opposition to this. And I, even now, none of the churches or the neighborhood have come forward. This is one of the only communities that has never had ABC. Lindenwood and up around that particular area, for years, they've had stores there. I even had a store there, and I never put an application in for ABC. But I been into the farm market one time, and I come by it every morning, you know, going to work. So based on where they are, I vote aye.
Okay, I think I got this out of order a little bit here. I didn't give Kathy Reese an opportunity to speak. Are you okay, Kathy? Okay. And Rodney, Jordan, Mr. Jordan, did you wanna speak? Are you okay? And Dawn, I'll offer you the same thing. We're okay, okay. All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Smigel?
Bev, good job and continue doing what you're doing. I hope this helps bring in some additional revenue for you so that you can continue expanding and doing the great things that you're doing. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Bev, this is really cool. And now that I know that the League of Women Voters are meeting at your place, I may actually get up at 6:00 in the morning to be there. I vote aye.
They do meet early.
Don't count on it.
Yeah, she can make, I'll send your attention behind you.
Okay.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the second is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Five Points Community Farm Market on property located at 2,500 Church Street, Suite A. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as St. Germain on property located at 2,200 Colonial Avenue, Suite 5, 5-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R7.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Sushi King on property located at 4249 East Little Creek Road, Suite 106, 5-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Where we are, 7.
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Sweet Teas on property located at 345 Granby Street, Suite C, 5-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends...
And the applicant, Louis, is at us there? Is here? Good evening. Okay. Well, thanks for coming down and good luck with your new business, by the way. Okay, go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as The Birch Bar on property located at 1231 West Alney Road, 5-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Malia, is it Posh is here, if anybody has any questions? Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R9.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment named The Torch Bistro on property located at 601 Oerpac Street, 5-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay. And Mr. Al Rogos is here to answer questions, if anybody hasn't. Okay. The Torch Bistro, go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R10.
An ordinance approving the acquisition by the City of Norfolk of any interest held by certain title holders of the property conveyed to Joseph Morris by deed dated May 27, 1919, recorded in the Circuit Court of the City of Chesapeake, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to accept a deed or deeds of quitclaim on behalf of the City of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R12.
An ordinance approving the acquisition by the City of Norfolk of any interest held by certain title holders of the property shown on the plot of Chesapeake Bay, property of Hillary Land's heirs, recorded in the Circuit Court of the City of Chesapeake, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed of quitclaim on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R12.
An ordinance to accept any and all outstanding dedications of property to the City of Norfolk for public use. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
We have 14.
An ordinance granting EA's Apartments Inc. permission to encroach into the right-of-way of Patrick Street and Cross Street at 125 Patrick Street with an existing chain-link fence and into West Berkeley Avenue and South Main Street with existing buildings at 120 and 132 West Berkeley Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R15.
An ordinance approving the conveyance to the City of Norfolk by Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority of a certain parcel of property that is currently part of the West Ocean View Conservation Project and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R16.
An ordinance approving the acceptance of a grant award of up to $24,999 from Eastern Virginia Medical School and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant fund. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
R17.
An ordinance authorizing the expenditure of funds heretofore appropriated for economic development and authorizing the city manager to enter into implementing cooperation agreements with the Economic Development Authority. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Marcus, is this your slush fund?
There's no such thing.
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R18.